Hello and welcome back to American Motherhood's Local Election Series. This episode features our ninth and final candidate for Westerville City Council, John Gaddis. John describes himself as an activist, advocate, and community leader, and his campaign is built around three core values: people, transparency, and the future. We discuss how he hopes to balance growth with sustainability and the creative solutions he proposes to address rising costs. He also shares his perspective on transparency in local government, climate action, and community safety. My goal with this series is to make local elections more accessible for you, the voters. If you find this helpful, please share the episode with a friend, leave a review, and subscribe on your favorite podcast app. And if you'd like to join the conversation, you can always reach me at AmericanMotherhood@gmail.com. Okay, let's dive in. Well, John, thank you so much for taking the time to talk with me today. I'm excited to get to know you and learn more about your campaign and your vision for Westerville. To start, can you tell us about yourself and what inspired you to run for city council?
Yeah, well, my name is John Gaddis, and I am running for Westerville City Council, as you said. I have lived in Westerville for about 20 years, but I have been a political activist and advocate for about 15-ish years or so. And I've been engaged in city council business and going council meetings on and off for seven to eight years. Really, I started getting involved and going to council during the debate on the nondiscrimination ordinance. I've worked a lot with Valerie Cummings and Alex Heckman to build support and bring people to council to help advocate for that issue and getting that passed. So what inspired me to run for council is I'm really concerned about the direction of our country and the direction of our state and what is going on. And I think we need some different people in government, some new people in government, who are going to stand up to what is happening at federal level and the state level and use the power of local government to help protect people, protect our values, and make sure that we can hold the line here at the local level because we need at least one level of government that is working and fighting for people.
That's wonderful, and that's maybe not today, but I'd love to hear more about the past 10 years and so and all that you've done and seen. So maybe you can sprinkle some of that in today's conversation. But we definitely want to focus on the future here. And speaking of, your campaign highlights people, transparency, and the future. How do those values shape your vision for Westerville?
Well, I think people are first intentionally. I think I'm thinking first about people and trying to think about what is best for residents and families in Westerville and trying to do things that are going to help them. I think I recognize right now that a lot of people are feeling a crunch in the cost of living, and we really need to do more things about that. One of the issues I've highlighted is housing and thinking about things we can do on housing that will be beneficial to people and slow the increases in costs and reduce costs for people. There's been a lot of talk on council about building new housing, and that's been the main focus of things. I've tried to think about and start exploring other ideas that could be policy fixes. One of them is this idea that we could ban algorithmic price fixing for rent. There's some larger landlords that use third-party companies and use non-public data to help them basically fix prices for rent. And some of the things I've read is that's driving up the cost of rent by $50 to $100 a month for people. And that is something that other cities and other states have looked at and some of them have done. And it's something I think we could do here. That would be a policy intervention that wouldn't require building new housing that could help people and help drive down costs. The other thing that I've started exploring with some people is the idea that we could ban or restrict private equity ownership of houses. You hear about the housing market and what is happening. Wall Street investors are treating houses like they are securities to be bought and traded, just like a stock or a bond, and not really something that we need for people to live in. And they're real physical things that have a physical need and use in our community. And so what happens is these private equity people come in, and they come in with cash, no inspection offers, that families really just can't compete with. And so they end up snatching up houses. And then, as I understand it, there are a lot of them that sit vacant, and so they're not even housing people. And how this would work would be an idea that we try to get those houses back on the market so that they can actually be supply for housing and families can buy them and move into them. And I think a lot of them would say things like "ban", but really what it is, it's about putting a cost on holding a house and keeping it vacant. And this is something that has been done, I think, in other places around the Airbnb issue. Places that have a lot of tourist industry, they have a lot more Airbnb issues, and they've had more regulation on those. And so that would kind of bring that here and be looking at the private equity ownership issue to do similar things, to put a cost on holding houses and keeping them vacant when they could be housing families.
Yeah, I'm familiar with both of those topics. And I've seen in other states where they've had lawsuits against the algorithm for the rent. I haven't followed it to see the outcome, but I did think that was really interesting. And then for the private equity ownership, we briefly lived in North Carolina. And when we sold that home, we had an offer from a private equity firm that was higher than our other offers. And just on that or principle, we didn't take that. And so I agree with you. I think it's an issue, and I think we want to prioritize our families. But it's hard, I think, for some families, obviously, to turn down that cash offer, right, and quick fix. And so that's a very interesting topic of conversation.
And so just one more thing maybe to talk about is utility bills and rising utility costs. I think that's a concern for everything. I think our prices here in Westerville for things like electricity are lower because we're insulated a bit because we have a municipal electric utility, but I don't think we're going to be immune for those forever. One of the ideas that I've had is that we should reduce the connection fees that are in the bills for water and electric each month and put more of the cost on the amount that you're using because that really gives you more control about the size of your bill. And taking steps for efficiency can give you cost savings, whereas the monthly fees are just static and don't change. And for people who are, you know, like me, I have a small home, I live in a condo. The monthly fees are a big portion of my bill. And so if you're an apartment dweller, somebody who lives in a small house, you don't have much control over your bill because so much of it is that static fee. And just giving more, putting more of it on the how much you use will give people greater control and help them reduce their bills.
So not necessarily putting more cost on the city or on the utilities, but more, you know, spreading it out based on usage?
Yeah, I think that will help people. And it gives us incentives for people to be more efficient because more of it is on how much you use versus just that flat fee.
Right, right. Very interesting.
And I can't claim ownership over this idea. I think it was the Consumers Council has raised this issue with the PUCO at the state level because for natural gas, I think the connection fee now, just to have natural gas, is almost $50 a month. It's ridiculous. We can't do anything about natural gas, but we can do things for the utilities that we do control here in the city, so.
Right, right. Okay, so speaking of, Westerville is growing quickly, as we all know. So how do you balance development with preserving community character and addressing those climate concerns?
Yeah, I think that a lot of the community really isn't, I think, isn't primed for development, and it's going to stay pretty static in the same anyways. You know, we're not going to change Uptown or, you know, redevelop Uptown or redevelop a lot of residential areas. I think the areas that are primed for development are the few pieces of open land we have. And some of the commercial and retail areas around the city, the Brooks Edge area comes up quite a bit, the area around Huber Village, East Wind, the Kohl's store. We have a lot of areas where there's low, single-floor buildings, where maybe the land isn't being used effectively or totally. So redeveloping those areas. And I think really, in those sort of redevelopment plans, we can make them more in line with the rest of Westerville and the character of Uptown. I think Uptown is the core of Westerville and what people think of and really defines the character of the city. But then we have parts of the city that are, you know, basically without character and nondescript, and they're just strip malls like the rest of America. And it's an opportunity to redevelop and change those places, like the south end of Westerville, where there's a lot of just generic homogeneity with everything else and make them more in line with the rest of Westerville. And, you know, it gives us opportunity to build upwards a little bit. I don't think we're going to be building any skyscrapers in Westerville anytime soon, but I don't think it's absurd to think that on the high traffic, the thoroughfares in Westerville, the State Street, Polaris Parkway, Cleveland Avenue, we should have buildings that are at least two or three stories, that there can be housing above and retail or offices below, or there can be a mix of buildings that are retail and commercial versus these places that they're just all these single-story buildings on, you know, large, high-traffic thoroughfares. And that's where we could really do some more infill and have greater density in the city and accommodate more people and more businesses and more uses.
Right, right. That's great. So what considerations can the city take or should the city take regarding climate change as they look to redevelop?
Yeah, I mean, I think part of it is, I think we need to preserve land for parkland and green space as well as when we develop. But for sustainability and development, I think we need to have more solar installations and the city is working that on city facilities. There's been some businesses that have been aggressive with that. Chase has been very aggressive with installing solar on their facilities here in the city. But definitely need to do what we can to encourage more of that so that we have more of our electricity generation within the city limits and within the city grid.
Yeah, absolutely. On sustainability, what top actions would you push council to take right away?
I think for anybody following what's been happening in Washington, you know, this summer, just before the Fourth of July, Congress passed a bill that had a lot of really bad things in it. One of the bad things was they repealed a ton of renewable energy credits that were passed in the Inflation Reduction Act in the Biden administration. One of them was the residential tax credits. So just anybody listening, I want to remind people that the residential tax credits for like solar expire at the end of this year. Efficiency tax credits expire at the end of this year. So if you were thinking about doing anything at your house, installing solar, upgrading your HVAC system, doing windows that are going to be, you know, increasing your efficiency, now is the time to do that before those tax credits expire. But for the city perspective, there's something called, I think it's the production tax credit. So for any new renewable energy facilities, the people who own them get a certain tax credit based on the amount of energy that they produce. And those facilities need to be, I'm trying to remember the exact dates here. I think they need to be under construction by like the July 3rd or 4th of 2026, and I think in production by the end of 2027 in order to still qualify for those tax credits. So the city has these plans for solar, and I've already spoken about this during Citizen Comments at council. And then at the last budget meeting, the staff said they were working on some things to get some things accelerated somewhat. But that's a ticking time clock, really, and I think it's the first thing we have to focus on is trying to get those, the plan solar that's been authorized by council is about 10 megawatts. But what they've announced publicly is that the community center and the police building, that's about 2 megawatts of power. So we need to figure out what the plans are for the other eight megawatts that are authorized, make sure we're going to make the deadlines, and if we can, do even more. You know, if we have plans that we're thinking about for another 5, 10 megawatts, can we get those going so that those qualify for the tax credits? Because I think that, right now, the city's financing plan on these is really dependent on those tax credits. They're working with, I guess, Columbus Energy Ventures, something like that. And it's a private company, and part of their financial plan is to use the tax credits to help pay for the solar and then, you know, work with the city to place them. And then they own the facilities and sell the electricity to the city for 25, 30 years, and then the city can buy and own the facilities for a nominal cost. And so then that gets the private entity, I think, then gets access to the tax credits in the way the city maybe couldn't. And so that's something we need to keep in mind and make sure we're able to take advantage of that because there are going to be some avenues that are closing pretty quickly.
Right, oh, very interesting. So who leads that effort, right? So is that like the planning committee? Or is that, you know, and obviously the city has to do a piece of it?
A lot of this is, you know, being driven by the staff. It's being driven by the Electric Division with Chris Montishelli, and he is definitely the lead on that. But I think, you know, council is definitely giving direction and can be pushing for more and having more public discussion on that to make sure that people are aware of what's going on. And I think it's something that people care about a lot, and making sure that we maximize what we can do is important. Because I think even after that ends, we're still going to want to do more things, but we're going to have to do them, figure out a way to do them differently because the financial incentives and conditions have changed in the economics of it.
That's great. What specific steps should the city take now to lower costs while protecting essential services? And I know we've talked about that in some ways, but is there anything else that we could do immediately?
I think a lot of the things that I'm thinking about are like, we talked about the housing. We've talked about some changes to how we do utility pricing for utility bills. I think the solar installations are maybe, maybe it's not a cost reduction, but it helps control the cost because the city owns or has control of the generation facilities. Maybe this is a good time to talk about this a little bit. One of the big cost drivers for the city in electric costs is the cost of transmission. And so because the city doesn't really own any significant generating capacity of its own right now, we're buying electricity from other places, other generator, other generating facilities, mainly through AEP. And so we're paying them each month to transmit electricity to Westerville. And right now, that's something like over $1 million a month, and it just keeps increasing. And if we can build more of our generating capacity locally in Westerville, then we don't have to pay for that electricity to be transmitted from somewhere else to here. And that helps us control and keep down utility costs, slows the rise of those costs because we're going to control more of our own energy right here and not have to pay for that transmission cost that is a huge, I think, factor in rising costs right now.
Right. This has been a helpful perspective when it comes to sustainability and, you know, those priorities. So from what I've seen of you, I know that you're really passionate about this particular topic. So what changes would make city government more transparent and accessible for residents, especially those who can't attend our meetings?
Yeah, I think there are a number of things. I think right now, many council meetings are already on video and recorded and placed on the city website. I think we should do all of those meetings. Sometimes they're having meetings at the community center, like these budget meetings at the community center are not recorded. And I think that is, you know, a disservice to residents. But I also think it's a disservice to the city and the city staff and the work that they do because I think they're highlighting a lot of their best work there, and the community just doesn't have as much chance to see it because it's a long meeting on a Saturday morning that people are going to, you know, have conflicts with not be able to attend. And having that on video that people can go back to and listen to is important. I think having the meetings more places online would be helpful. I know from some of the contacts and advocacy work I've helped with in other cities, other cities livestream their meetings on Facebook. They post them on YouTube. And I think right now, the cities' meetings, I think, almost exclusively live on the city website, which is not someplace where people tend to go unless they're looking for something specifically. So I think that's, I think those are a couple of things that we can do. Then I think it's how the members of council conduct themselves and what they do. You know, do they have town halls? Do they have office hours? Community forums, things that give people a chance to interact and ask questions and have discussions with each other, really, about what their priorities are. And that's the sort of thing I'm going to do if I'm elected is just do those different things that maybe other council members aren't to try to invite more engagement. The other thing that I think has been talked about some is people are frustrated by perceived lack of dialogue with the council. And I think that's entirely artificial and could be changed a bit by changing the bylaws and the order of the meeting. The community comments happen, and then there's a bunch of business, and then there's council comments at the end. And people say their piece, and they don't stick around and they leave. And if the council members have things to say and they want to respond, people aren't necessarily hearing them. And I think having an opportunity earlier in the meeting for council and staff to respond to citizens' comments and answer questions that people have upfront, right after people make their comments, would be huge in terms of changing the perception people have and how they can listen and hear answers from the city rather than just feeling like it's a one-way conversation.
Absolutely. So can you talk me through how a recommendation like that can be presented? And how do they consider their options moving forward, they being council?
Well, the council did make some bylaw revisions this year. I think most of them kind of came up through the Chair of Council and the City Law Director. And then there was a discussion with staff members, and there was language presented, and then they voted on the language after, I think it was two readings, maybe, of the bylaw changes. But there's also, there's an additional business portion of the meeting where council members can present their ideas to members of council and try to get a vote to get them on the agenda for the next meeting. And I think that is something that could happen in that way. And, you know, I think even if there's consensus and broad agreement, they wouldn't necessarily even have to take that vote. They could just say, yes, we want to do this, and direct the staff to work on it and bring it to another, bring it to a future meeting. You know, and even I think there's the door open for members of council to present their own language in that context and say, this is what I have thought of as being a good alternative and idea for something we could do. These are things other communities have done that we could build on or copy here. Those are the ways I think you bring things forward. I think, though, for people who run for council and they have an agenda and things they want to get done, I think at minimum, we should be trying to push to have votes on some of these issues so that people in the community then know how everybody stands on things and say, you know, no, we don't want it this way, but, you know, maybe we can come back to this and rewrite this and do this another way, just to put people on the record on how they stand on things rather than just not having votes on them and not getting able to, not being able to move things forward.
I think what I would also love to see is more interest on the local level from our community members. And clearly, you've been very invested in the city of Westerville. And I'm curious, one, to hear like where that motivation comes from. But two, how would you encourage more of our community members to be interested and be involved? I know, you know, people are busy and they have other things going on. And also, quite frankly, some of these things are boring, right? And so how do you get buy-in to hear everyone's voices?
Yeah, I think, you know, we're in a different time. You know, local media is struggling. You know, I greatly appreciate and love the work that, like Gary Gardner does, but he's not, he's one person. He's not a full, he's not a full newsroom. And so we're just in a very different time from, you know, 20 to 30 years ago, where there was a reporter who would come to every local government meeting. Every local government meeting would generate an article in the newspaper, and people could see what was happening and then get engaged and say, well, I'm upset about that. I like that. I can, you know, contact members of council and give feedback to them. And we just don't have that anymore. And I think having, recreating that sort of engagement and discussion is difficult. I think, you know, I've talked a little bit on the campaign, a little about my biography at different times. I'm from Michigan originally. Both of my parents were on city council in Michigan at different times in my hometown. And so I grew up really, you know, having parents that were very involved in city government and paying attention to city government and were in city government. So it's sort of, I think, natural development that I would end up involved in city government, interested in city government as well. But when they were council, you know, it was that different time. You know, there was a reporter at every meeting, there was a story in the paper after every meeting. They didn't have, they didn't have online then, but they did video the meetings at a certain point. And there was a public access TV channel, and they would play the meetings in rotation on the public access TV channel, and people would watch them. And then, you know, they would have feedback. And so I think that comes back to what I was saying earlier about having the video more places online where more people watch it and see it. You know, we don't have a public access TV channel that's on everybody's TV set that they're going to watch, but having the meetings more places online, I think, would be helpful in increasing engagement. I know something people have mentioned or talked about in some of these discussions is that maybe we could have city communication staff or something write a short summary of what's happening at each meeting. We could have that on city communication channels, on social media, just so people know what is going on. And, you know, we may not have the newspaper, but maybe we can replace some of that function with our own communication staff to keep people informed and keep people engaged.
Yeah, and I imagine that the minutes are published too, but I don't think anybody's going to pick up the minutes for some light reading, right? So an article would be great.
The minutes are, you know, I think usually about three or four pages long, maybe longer. And so that's a lot. So what we need is something that is maybe a half a page that people can engage with and read quickly in a couple of minutes versus having to sort through the minutes and follow the minutes, trying to figure out what is going on.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. So as we've talked about, you are very clearly engaged with council already. Is there an example that you can think of, of a decision where you were watching closely and you had hoped for a different outcome?
I think the thing that sticks out most in my mind recently is I think what happened with marijuana in the city, recreational marijuana, I don't think really went down in the best way possible. Just for some context, a majority of Westerville residents voted for legal marijuana, legal recreational marijuana, was about 57-point-odd percent of people. And then the city was recommended by, the city council was recommended by staff at some point. I think it was late la- I think it was late last year to pass a moratorium on marijuana in the city limits, marijuana dispensaries businesses. And so they passed that for, for six months. And what happened during those six months was the state moved forward and licenses became available. And all the licenses in Franklin County were exhausted while we were in moratorium. And so then the city came back and passed a marijuana dispensary ordinance about six-ish months later that really was very restrictive and limited the, the number of dispensaries, I think were limited to, to one or two dispensaries and limits the places, the state law limits them from being within, I think, 100 feet of churches and schools and parks. But the city added restrictions on how far, how close they can be to one another. The, the zoning that they had to be in. And counted all the city's trails as parks. And so you know how many trails we have in the city. So that blocked off a lot more land. And so basically the, I think the, there's maybe one or two places right now where you could open a dispensary in the city of Westerville. Basically, I think it's like the, maybe the, if you could get a piece of land in the Giant Eagle parking lot or the Myers parking lot and build there, you could have a dispensary there. But all of the land on Polaris Parkway, most of that is, is out of bounds because it's too close to trails or, and, or it's the wrong zoning. A lot of the zoning there is, is planned development or multi-use. It's not the, I think, the commercial retail zoning that they had allowed. And then I think there's a, a company that, that is looking or has got the license to put a dispensary in Columbus, just basically right over the city limits, right there in Columbus on Polaris. And so because the radius, that's going to block off another portion of, of Polaris. And so we got Franklin County blocked off because there are no licenses. And then we got very little land on, in Delaware County that's available because of all the restrictions. And so it's very, very narrow. I think it's, you know, technically you could open a dispensary in Westerville, but the, the, the restriction, the additional restrictions that have been placed on it are just so burdensome. It's, it's unlikely to happen. And I think that's beyond just, you know, not respecting the wishes of voters in Westerville. And what they wanted was, was access to, to recreational marijuana. Right now, the way that's written, there is revenue sharing and taxes that come from having those businesses. I know in, in Michigan, where I'm from, for, for some local governments, that's been a significant amount of money. And it's still kind of to be decided in, in Ohio, whether it's going to be much money or whether, or whether the, the, what was passed by voters will stay the law and it will be not amended by the legislature. But there's opportunity there for revenue that I think the city has kind of closed the door on in a way that was maybe short-sighted because the, because people wanted it here and, and people who want to get it here, they're going to be able to just draw, drive over the border into Columbus somewhere to get it anyways. But Columbus is going to get all the tax revenue and we're going to get nothing. And so I think that is, it's a missed opportunity, I think, really for, for a lot of reasons. So lots of, lots of words, maybe too much detail there, but, but that's, that's, that's what was going on.
No, that's interesting. I, I did not follow that one. So, so it's good to hear that perspective. Let's go back to budgets real quick. So just when you're approaching the budget, I think my question is ultimately, how do you prioritize the needs with limited funds? And I know that the budget is complicated and it's quite large, but in a, in a general sense, you know, what, what would you prioritize when faced with difficult decisions?
Yeah, I think, I think my priorities would probably be around prioritizing things that are going to help people in their day-to-day lives first. I think things that are maybe nice-to-haves, things that are, you know, building new facilities, renovating facilities. Those are things that can be pushed out to the future. But the things that help people in their day-to-day lives, I think, are the things that I would prioritize in the budget. You know, I think some things in the way things are set up have, have kind of dedicated revenue streams, right? You know, the, the, the electric utility is mainly supported by ratepayers and, and the rates people pay with utility bills, same with the water. The Parks and Recreation has an earmarked part of the income tax, the local income tax that funds that. And so then the, the general revenue is mainly the things, the, the property tax and a portion of the income tax and where that goes. And that's funding things like, you know, Public Works, the streets and then the police and the fire. And so there's different buckets that the money's going into to fund, fund certain things. So I think that prioritizing doing the things that help people first, that people can experience is, is important. And I would like to see us, you know, quite frankly, do more of that, reduce costs, reduce costs for community events, eliminate costs for community events for things like Parks and, Parks and Rec stuff. I was trying to find this out last night. I know there was, somebody told me that in the past couple of years, there's something that used to be free that is now, now has a cost associated with it. I don't know what it was, if it was the, I don't know if it was the Pumpkin Glow or if it was the Ice Castle or something that happens in the winter. You know, like those, those are the sort of things we could prioritize doing is making those free community events versus charging people for them. And, and that's, that's what I would like to, like to see and prioritize.
That begs a good question. How do you measure this concept of government? Whether you're talking about city government or state or national? The concept of, of whether it should be run as a business or run as a service, right? So when you think about the Ice Castle, I think it's a good local example. That event is so popular. We did it for the first time last year and it was fun. It was great. But I can see how, tickets sell out almost immediately, right? And so I can see how there's a natural inclination to put a cost to it and because spots are limited and, and it's a good way to make revenue to support those efforts. But to your point, it's, it can be a barrier and do we need to charge for that? So how do you weigh those two different concepts?
Well, you know, I think, I think ultimately first, the city is not a business. You know, we're a community. And the city, if we're going to do these things that are community things, they should be available to anyone and costs should not be a barrier. And I think even if there's limited capacity, there are other ways to, to have people sign up and have slots. And you can have tickets, but tickets can be free. Tickets can be available to people, you know, first who have a Westerville address and, and things like that to, to help control the, the attendance, the number of people attending without adding a cost and cost barrier for, for the event. And, you know, we have a lot of other things like Fourth Friday and things like that that are public events and they're not charging people, there's not a gate. And, and I think that's something we should try to emulate with more of the, the community events that Parks and Rec is, is doing as well.
Yeah, very interesting. Okay, so local government can get political as we're seeing and have been seeing. How would you work across or how do you work across party lines and navigate disagreements while staying true to your principles?
That's a tough one. I think, I think with any disagreement, I think you need to try to find what the boundaries of compromise are. You know, what would, what would an acceptable solution look like to the other person? Think about what an acceptable solution would look like to you and then try to negotiate around those boundaries to find, find a solution. But, you know, sometimes it's just not, I think the, the disagreements aren't necessarily around those sort of boundaries. It's that, you know, you think this, you know, I might think this is an issue and then somebody else might not think it's an issue and it's not a priority for them. And so it's more about wanting to do something versus not wanting to do something. And it's hard to move someone who doesn't want to do something and convince them that this is a priority and something we should be concerned about and move on versus, you know, not wanting to do anything and trying to pull people together in that way. I think is more of a challenge. And I think some of that is, is just thinking about, there, there's a lot of things we can do that are priorities, that are low costs or no cost to the city, minimal costs. Like, like these ideas about, you know, increasing transparency by putting video meeting up, meeting, meetings up more places. Well, you know, you know, YouTube is, is largely free. Facebook is largely free. The idea that you can video all the meetings and video more meetings is going to be minimal cost. Those are things that really, you know, do I want to do this? Do we not want to do this? Like, there shouldn't be a lot of disagreement about those things and trying to bring people together. It's just a matter of, I think, priorities and, and try to convince people that, that something like transparency should be a priority and we should do some things to, to improve that versus doing nothing. And I think that's, that's where I think a lot of the, the problems of bringing, bringing people together come with because people want to do something versus not do anything and keep the status quo. I think other things like, you know, budgetary things, I think, are easier to, to negotiate because they have numbers, you know, well, well, you want this number, I want this number. You meet in the middle and, and find a, a good agreement on that. It, it's harder when it's more of a binary decision of, of doing something versus doing nothing, trying to find an, an agreement there and, and getting, getting to the, getting to a compromise where, where something gets done that at least is, is beneficial for people and, and meets the objective of, of what, whatever we want to do.
I like where you took that answer. But I also want to talk about the, the larger issues or, the louder issues, I'll say, right? That are on the national stage that, that we can see an impact here in Westerville. And I think one example that I keep hearing about is the idea of sanctuary cities. And so when it comes to a conversation like that, where there are so many different voices and so many different implications, how do you approach that? And how do you engage in that conversation with your colleagues?
Yeah, I think that is, I think that's a difficult situation to try to bridge a gap on because I think people have different values there and different priorities. I think there are people who are prioritizing and are concerned about people. And then there are people who are putting the, the rules and the processes first. And for people who are very concerned about the rules and the processes of things like, like immigration and then the people who are concerned first about the experiences of the families that are being affected, you know, that is a hard bridge to cross and, and try to get people together on. I think some of it is, there is a lot of misunderstanding and I think education can help. I think, you know, I talked about this, some of the candidate forum, I've talked about this in council comments earlier this year, that I think a lot of people from the, from the term sanctuary cities, that it has a connotation to it that comes from the idea of religious sanctuary, that people are going to be provided with, with housing and food and, and, you know, shelter. And, and, and that's what sanctuary city is. But that's really not the bulk of what a lot of, of, of what is being considered here. The, the, the main thrust of what's being considered is are we going to use our local policing resources to enforce federal immigration law? And is that a good use of our local tax dollars when there may be other more serious crimes that are being committed or things that they should be doing to, to protect public safety? And I'm of the, I'm of the thought that using the local police to enforce federal immigration laws actually makes us less safe because you see what is happening at the federal level where they're just trying to get people and, you know, they're, they're nabbing students and parents who are just going about their day-to-day lives. And if we start having police doing that, that isn't really a good use of, of local dollar, local police dollars. And, and, you know, is not making us safer because we're just, we're just going after people living their lives, doing their day-to-day things versus people are actually committing crimes that are harming people and harming the public. But, you know, bringing people together on that and talking about like, what, what are we really talking about here? And trying to get away from, getting away from those terms like sanctuary city, which comes with a lot of baggage attached and just talk about the specific issue of what we're talking about here. You know, the, the city has limited resources for policing. We don't have unlimited money. We don't have unlimited staff. Where are we going to spend that, spend those limited resources? I think is the best way to focus the conversation versus, you know, talking about issues, talking about issues with words like sanctuary city that brings a lot of baggage with it for people and a lot of connotations that maybe are not, not really true and not really accurate for, for the conversation.
I think that's a really important consideration for, for any topic that has been poisoned is the only word that's coming to mind.
Polarized.
Thank you. For any topic that's been polarized, right, by the, by the national conversation. I think that's really great reminders. If you don't mind, we, we don't have to talk about this if you don't want, but I am curious to stay on the topic of immigration. And if, I'm curious if you have insight into what we can do as a city or just even what you're seeing from our community members who have immigrated here and how, how we could support them or what struggles you see that they're experiencing.
Oh, that's a, that's a tough question. I think we can, I think setting the welcoming, being a welcoming community and by saying that we welcome immigrants here, I think would be helpful. I think taking, having council take a vote on another sort of resolution, welcoming immigrants here. They did that for refugees several years ago when there was some controversy about refugee resettlement. You know, I think, I haven't heard much specifically from people or immigrants about what they're experiencing. But I think that, you know, based on the national, national stage, you know, we know what people must be feeling. People, people are scared, people are frightened, even people who I think are, you know, naturalized citizens or they're legal residents with green cards, they're scared about the, what they could be ensnared in. And trying to support those people by saying, you know, we see them, we, we know they're scared. We know that they have concerns and that we're going to do whatever we can to protect them and keep them, keep them safe is, is the most we can do right now. And try to be sure that we're not contributing to the problem and making it worse by, you know, having, having our local resources co-opted into this effort is, is probably about the most we can do as a local government and as a community as a whole is just trying to be, maintain that welcoming atmosphere.
Yeah, I didn't realize that they had that resolution a few years ago.
Yeah, it was, you know, it was during the first Trump administration. There was a, a rule or a executive order saying that, that communities had to opt in to refugee resettlement. And so when they had that, the, the council here, and I think councils in many other cities in central Ohio, passed resolutions to say they were going to accept refugee resettlement. You know, I don't think Westerville has been a big, big recipient of refugee resettlement, but we did open the door then. And so I think having, having more actions like that would be, would be helpful for, from council.
That's great. That's really interesting. Okay, switching gears. How can our city best support our kids and young adults?
That's, I think we do a lot already. I mean, I think there's a lot of programs from Parks and Rec and the community center that support kids. And I think that's something we could probably always do, do more on. And I think And I think that something that has come up in council a little bit is maybe trying to find a way to make the community center more open and accessible to more, more young people in the broader community, especially more people who are in the Westerville School District, but maybe not in the Westerville City Limits. Because those people are, you know, I think part of our community, a broader community as well. And they're, they're paying more prices to access things at the community center. And I think trying to find a space for them would be, would be huge. And, and make their ability to participate in those programs less costly. And I'm trying to think anything else.
Yeah, well, I think obviously the, the, one of the larger conversations right now happening in the community is the question of, of the school earned income tax ballot issue.
Yeah, I definitely support, I support the tax levy. You know, I think it's unfortunate that we're in this situation at all because the, the reason we're here is because the state government is not properly funding public education and public schools. And we are taking a lot of money from public tax dollars at the state level and putting them towards private schools. And the other reason is public school districts have a lot of costs that are being forced on them from the state in terms of, I think it's ridiculous that the public school districts are forced by the state to provide transportation for private school students with their bus services. And that's a cost for them that really has no limit. And, and I don't think there's, they're getting much reimbursement, if at all, to, for those costs. And I think I would like to see some change at the state level. But I think in the meantime, we have to do what we can, pass this levy and try to hold, hold things harmless.
I hadn't heard that, that point before about opening up the reduced cost for the community center for families within our school district, right? Because that would lead them to, you know, just continue to be, be more involved with, with their friends and, and their, the rest of the community.
I can't take, I can't take credit for that. Councilman Wright brought that up at a council meeting, I think, last year. And I think it's something that is, is worth consideration and finding out what the cost would be and, you know, how we can make it happen.
Yeah, that's great. That did, I am curious, that picked the question. With your involvement with local city, do you also have a high level of engagement with state politics as well? And, and how does that lead into each other?
Not as much with state politics at this point, but I'm paying much closer attention right now to what's happening at local level because I think it is, I think it's a place where we can have the most impact. The state government is, it's, you know, very ideologically driven right now. The, the people that are in control at the state house very much have an agenda. And I think they are not listening to citizen voices that, that come in there and testify in committees. And I think, you know, they just, they, they pass the things they want. Sometimes they pass things that don't even have hearings. There were things that were tucked in the budget this year that I don't think ever had hearings. So I think it's, it's harder for, for citizens to influence and drive outcomes at the state level than it is at the local level right now. And so that's, that's where I am spending my energy. And I think it would be, it would be helpful if more state house races were competitive. I think that gerrymandering is a huge issue in the state. And the fact that so many members of the state legislature are drawn into districts that favor one political party over the other, you know, by 55 to 45% or greater, then those people are basically safe. You know, a district that is drawn 10 points apart is really hard to, to flip in an election. And I think that we, if we had more competitive districts, we would have a better state government. But, you know, we're kind of where we are right now until we can find a way to fix that.
Well, no, I, I admire your commitment and desire to, to bring an impact to the local city. And I agree with you, it's really frustrating at the state level now. And this is why I've been trying to learn more about our local city, right? And what we can do in that way. So that's great. Okay, how will you measure your success if you're elected to council?
Oh, that, that is a hard one too. So many of the things that I want to do aren't, aren't quantitative, right? They're, they're not more qualitative. You know, how do you measure transparency? How do you measure, you know, whether you're helping people? You know, I think that I have some things that I've, that I've set out to do. And my hope is to at least have those conversations and bring about some votes so that people will know where members of the council stand on those issues. And maybe some of those efforts I will lose, some of those efforts maybe I will win. But just having those conversations, pushing those issues forward, trying to put people on the record and stimulate the conversation, I think is, is a victory of, of its own. And if I can come out at, at the end of it, you know, serving a few years, serving the full term and have accomplished a couple of things in my, my platform and, and agenda, I think that would be a huge victory for, for me. But I think there's, I think there's, like, there's so many of these qualitative things that I think on their own will be successes. I think I'm just going to be a different member, a different type of member of council, more transparent member of council in the way I approach meetings, the, the questions I ask, the comments I offer, the opportunities that I'm going to offer for residents to engage and provide feedback. There's a lot of things I can control on my own that hopefully will inspire and, and give space for, for other council members to do the same. And so I think that's, that's all I can do.
That's great. Okay, I, I added one here to our list of questions. What is your favorite aspect of Westerville and what keeps you here?
My favorite aspect of Westerville, I think unquestionably, I think favorite aspect of Westerville is Uptown. I think Uptown is the gem of the city, the, the community there that we have. You know, the, being able to, to go to Uptown and run into people you know and have that, you know, really makes the, the city feel smaller than it is. And so I think that's, that's the, I think that's the thing I like the most. What keeps me here, you know, I think it's, I think it is the community. I think it is, you know, my connections here in Westerville and in central Ohio more broadly. And, you know, I've lived here now for, I've lived in Westerville now for about 20 years. And I've lived in central Ohio for about most of the past 28 years. So I've lived here a big portion of my life now. And so I have a lot of connections here that keep me, keep me grounded here. And this is where I, so I'm going to stay for a while.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, well, where can we find you as you campaign this fall?
Well, let's see. Let's talk online first. I have a website. GATISS, G-A-T-I-S-S, one T, two S's, for westerville.com. I am on Facebook and I am on Blue Sky and I am on Instagram. And so I'm sharing content for my campaign there. Out and about in the community, physically, I've been going to Fourth Friday, been around Fourth Friday, was there last night. Knocking doors, doing those things. And, you know, where you can always find me, I'm going to be at every council meeting. And so that's, that's where I am too. And so that's, that's a reliable place to find me, probably is the council meetings. So right now, really don't have any other things concretely planned. Will be at the Fourth Friday in October as well. Definitely will be there. But hope to have more events. And if you follow me on social media, my website and, and event section, you'll see what's, what else is happening.
Yeah, that's great. And I'll include all of those links in the show notes as well, so people have easy access to that. So, well, thank John so much for your time today. It's been great talking with you and I look forward to seeing you around town.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much for having me.